Twenty first, two thousand fourteen. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns? Trustee Erns?
Here.
Here.
Camer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Present. And I've asked Pastor Jim Di Palma from World Overcomers Church to please step up and provide the invocation.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the invitation. I don't take it lightly. I'm grateful to live in a village here and to work in a village here, and I've been a part of this community for the last twenty-one years, and it's been a pleasure working with you. For those of you that do not know this, I used to pastor the church over at thirteen fifteen West Lake Street, and now we're in the process of swapping buildings with another church that I don't think it's a coincidence that we met at a breakfast, at a clergy breakfast, just down the road here. So, we're grateful to be a part of what's happening in Bartlett, and the Bible declares to us that we are to pray for those in authority. So, it's good to see you all tonight. Can we bow our heads in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this privilege that we have to live in a country where we still have some freedom. Lord, we ask that you rule over this township, continue to. We ask for your blessings over America. We ask for your blessings over the township, Lord, from every individual in this room, for every leader, Lord God, we pray. We pray, Lord, that your angels surround and protect us. We thank you for the favor that you've shown to this community. Lord, we ask for unity in the community to remain. Father, we understand at times we will not always agree with everything we say and do, but at the end of the day, we're there for each other. Continue to bless us and America, we pray. In thy name, amen.
Amen.
May standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it is named, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little more difficult getting this many people in concert. Thank you, Pastor. Next item on our agenda falls under the consent agenda. All items listed at the asterisks are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member still requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at appropriate time on the agenda. At this point, is there anything that any board member would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. If we could add the second item to the Public Works, to the consent agenda. Territorial Filter Media, replace me.
Chairman Erns, you okay with that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include item two, F two, under Public Works Committee.
Second?
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Erns. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
That motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Erns. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have on the agenda is minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for October seventh, two thousand fourteen, for both the board and the committee.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have no treasurer's report this evening. Next item on our agenda is under President's Report, and I believe the first item we have is our Passport to Adventure winners. Bartlett Historical Museum is proud to announce the top site visitors in the two thousand fourteen Passport to Adventure program. I believe Bartlett History Museum intern Malvina Bardoni will recognize the winners and their families for their outstanding participation in this program.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Malvina Bardoni, and I am the museum assistant at the museums. This past Labor Day brought an end to the twenty-third annual Passport to Adventure program, sponsored by the institutions of the Kane Dupage Regional Museum Association. For the past seventeen years, the Village of Bartlett Museums has participated in this program that encourages children and their families to visit local museums and nature centers, beginning on Memorial Day. This summer, six hundred children from Bartlett alone, along with children from neighboring communities, went on a journey from Addison to Winfield and a dozen of places in between. Talking to parents, grandparents, and children throughout the past seventeen years, they all have said how much their families enjoy this program for many reasons, such as discovering new places in their community, learning new things, having fun. It's economically doable. A lot of the museums are free or have a nominal charge. It's the perfect staycation, and especially the opportunity to be together as a family. From the museum's standpoint, this program brings increased visitor numbers through the doors, not only from Bartlett but beyond our boundaries. Overall, this increases awareness of the museums, encourages future visits, provides learning opportunities, and is a fun and safe environment for their parents and the children. From an economic standpoint, visitors are brought into our downtown, which exposes and encourages them to discover what Bartlett has to offer in the ways of dining, shopping, and recreation. Every year, the Village of Bartlett Museum recognizes the top three Bartlett families for their accomplishments and dedication to the program. With one exception, each year, our top families have visited all the sites. This year, two families, the Banks and the Banks-Bulliandi, visited all sixty-two sites listed in the passport booklet. These five children will receive the Mayor's Medallion. Our third place family is the Wilsons, who experienced fourteen museums. Let's meet and congratulate the families now. The Wilsons, would you like to join? Jacob is eight years old and a third grader at Centennial Elementary School. He visited fourteen passport sites this summer with his parents Rodney and Elizabeth. This is the family's second time participating in the passport program, and yes, they plan to do it again. Why? Because they find it fun. Jacob enjoyed their visit to Willowbrook Wildlife Center in Glen Allen, where he learned about owls and endangered animals. At the Elgin Public Museum, Jacob even got to feed the buffalo. Mom Elizabeth says the family enjoys discovering all these new places. The Wilson family has lived in Bartlett for six years. The Banks, would you please like to join us? Madeline and Nathan are four years old and attend Masters Christian Preschool. Their parents, Angela and John, who's not present. Can you imagine being only four years old and visiting sixty-two museums in one summer? These two did. Nathan's favorite was the Moser Tower and Millennium Carolan in Naperville. There, he climbed two-hundred-and-fifty-three steps to the top of the hundred-sixty-foot tower and enjoyed the spectacular view while learning about the workings of the Carolan. Madeline's number-one site was Willowbrook Wildlife Center, a rehabilitation facility and education center that provides care for injured and orphaned animals that are native to northeastern Illinois. This is the family's second year participating in the program. Last year, they visited a couple of sites. This year, with her sister-in-law's family, who you will meet next, they went gung-ho and became determined to visit all sixty-two sites. The Banks and Bulliandi family, would you like to come up? Juliana, eight-six, and her siblings, three-year-old Addison and Jackson. Juliana attends Sycamore Trails Elementary School and is in first grade. Addison and Jackson attend Academy for Kids. Their parents are Margaret Banks and Jenny Bulliandi. When you go to sixty-two museums in one summer, how do you pick a favorite? All three children enjoyed Blackberry Farm in Aurora the best. They like visiting the blacksmith shop, and writing the carousels, the hands-on activities, and so much more. Overall, Juliana loved learning about what life was like in the past days and visited all the local history museums. She continues to share this information with family and friends. This is the family's second year to do the program. Admitting they are competitive and have read about the Mayor's Medallion in the newspaper, this year they decided to visit all the museums, along with the Banks family, giving all the children a wonderful and fun-filled summer. The Village of Bartlett Museums congratulates the Banks-Bulliandi and Wilson families on their dedication and participating in the two thousand four Passport to Adventure program. Thank you.
Thank you, Malvina. Easy, easy now. Our next item on our agenda is the resolution, which I will read. Resolution recognizing Bartlett Hills Golf Course Manager Bob Gavalek upon his retirement from the Village of Bartlett. Whereas many golfers spend their weekends working and count themselves lucky to play a round or two on the weekends, professional golfer and Bartlett Hills Golf Course Manager Bob Gavalek wisely parlayed his love of the game into his life's work. And whereas Bob started at Bartlett Hills as a pro in March of nineteen eighty-one and has guided the growth and success of this municipal course for thirty-three years, adding ever greater responsibilities and the manager title to his position along the way. And whereas during Bob's tenure, the eighteen-year-old course, which was originally built in nineteen twenty-nine and purchased by the village in nineteen seventy-eight, was transformed from a sleepy municipal course to a favorite destination for Chicagoland golfers. And whereas in nineteen ninety-six, Bob and the Bartlett Hills staff moved out of the old, all-purpose barn into a modern facility, fully appointed for hosting tournaments, outings, and leagues, and offering a practice range with grass tees, a junior golf program, and a full-service clubhouse with a golf shop, locker rooms, cart storage, lounge, grill room, and banquet facilities. And whereas when most area golf courses shut their doors against January's cold and snow, Bob happily opens Bartlett Hills to a dedicated contingent of volunteers who have hosted the Special Olympics Illinois Winter Games there since nineteen eighty-four, added the annual Special Olympics Golf Tournament in nineteen ninety-five, and recently earned Gavalek and various community members Amagiano's Hero Award for their outstanding support of this organization and its athletes. And whereas the village is forever appreciative that Bob has made the maintenance and management of our fairways and greens at Bartlett Hills and the enjoyment of area golfers his full-time job for thirty-three years, now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, president of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, Dupage, and Kane County, Illinois, offer our many, many thanks to Bartlett Hills Golf Course Manager Bob Gavalek for his many years of service to our community. We are proud to have had you as an employee in the Village of Bartlett, and we wish you a retirement free of hazards and hook shots and filled with good health and much happiness. Thank you, Bob.
Speech, speech.
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 Say something.
Something short, something short. Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much for going. You know, they say time goes fast when you're having a good time and enjoying your career and that. And my time is full of fire, I'll tell you what. You know, in August, July, August, I feel a little tired and a little worn out, but every morning I walk in and the first thing I see is the golf course. And I think to myself, that's my office. I've been very, very fortunate, and even more fortunate are the people that I've been around and had opportunity to meet and become friends with and everything. And I look this up today, Valerie, since I started, one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand golfers have come through the door. Not including all the other activities that go on. So, between that and all the staff here that I've had the privilege to work under and work with, that's very special. I've never taken that for granted. So, thank you, everybody, and that's all I can really say, just thank you.
You have to tell us if your game improves after you retire.
I really hope it does. I'm pretty good right now. Hopefully, from this point, I'm gonna take these away. From this point, I'm gonna try to get some golf in.
Enjoy.
Thank you so much, Bob. Course wouldn't be the same. And if I can just insert a little tidbit here. I remember when I was first on the board and I had a, what I thought was a very relevant suggestion for the golf course, and Valerie said, and I called Valerie, and she said, "Oh, fine. Why don't you meet with Bob Gavalek tomorrow? You can have lunch and discuss it." And I don't even remember what it was, but, oh, God almighty, I don't even know why I attended because it was pointed out to me in very, very soft and kind terms that I didn't know what I was talking about. And it would probably be a bad idea, but that came from Bob, who has always been helpful and kind, and I thank you for all your years of service, Bob. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Anybody else have any other comments for Bob before we move on? I know very few people know the amount of time that Bob spends on the Special Olympics. It's kind of a part of his nature of humility, I guess, but I had the opportunity to go out and witness him and work at work, and he is so well-liked with the Special Olympics group, it's amazing. So, that is a true test of our community's character, and I thank you for doing that. We'll move along, as Bob will endure one more board meeting, or so. Next item on our agenda is Nicodino's Class B Liquor License Request. This is a request that came in for a change in the operation at the previous Nicodino's restaurant. The owners are requesting a Class B license. A Class B license allows for the retail sale of beer and wine for use and consumption on the premises, eight to one on Sunday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday from eight to two. The owners are requesting the same class of license but with new partners. A new license will be issued and the current one surrendered. No new license needs to be created by ordinance because the class of license is remaining the same. The appropriate surety bond and certificate of insurance have been submitted by the applicant. They have been reviewed and approved by the village. If there's no objection from the board, I intend to issue this license as submitted. And that is it for the President's Report. We'll move on to question-and-answer time for the board. Anybody at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to Town Hall portion of the meeting at this point. If anybody would like to address the board, we'd ask you to step up to the podium. Please state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Bob Bucaro, thirty-one-year resident, nine sixty-one Dorell Drive. I recently had the distinct privilege to be part of the Bartlett Police Department Citizens Academy. We met for ten weeks, and just what an awesome experience. Certainly, the board, administration, you guys know what a great police department we have. And having been in public safety for a number of years on the fire side, I thought that I had some understanding of what the police do and how they do it, but this was very eye-opening. So, my hats go off to Valerie for approving this, and certainly for the board for supporting Several things, or a couple of things, came into, became very evident, week in and week And that is how well-trained the police officers are. Every week, a different group of officers brought us through a different aspect of their operations, and without fail, each week, they demonstrated the outstanding training that they have. The second thing was, each week, the pride that each officer showed in wanting to explain how they do things and how they're such a great department. Fairly recently, an organization said that the Bartlett was the fourth-safest city in Illinois. And a couple of years ago, another organization indicated, based on crime statistics, that Bartlett was the fourth-safest place in the country. And again, that probably doesn't come to a whole lot of surprise to those who know exactly what the police department does and how they do it. The department is accredited by A CLIA to the gold standard, and I've heard Chief Williams in the past at presentations saying that that puts our police department in the top two percent of the country. And again, having a little glimpse into how they do things, it isn't surprising that they're in that top two percent. And for our per capita and the amount of residents in our village, it's very well the best police department. So, I want to say thank you, say thank you to Chief Williams for the opportunity, Deputy Chiefs Leonis and Aldrich. It certainly is your leadership with the commanders, the sergeants, all the officers, the entire staff of the police department that makes the department what it is. You've done a great job, and every resident in this town has the benefit of your protection and your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bucaro. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to Standing Committee Reports. First Standing Committee is the Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by trustee Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two items on the Planning and Zoning Committee this evening, the first of which is the petition for a variation to allow a five-foot-high fence in the corner side yard of the property, commonly known as two fifty Wilcox Court, which property is zoned SR three PUD. The owners, Edward and Jennifer Palladino, are requesting a variation from the maximum fence height of three feet in the thirty-five-foot corner side yard to install a five-foot-high decorative aluminum wrought iron style fence along Prospect to be located two feet inside the property line. A public hearing was held on October second, two thousand fourteen, and the variation and the zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval, subject to certain conditions, made the requisite findings of facts. With that, I move the passage of ordinance two oh fourteen dash eighty-three, an ordinance granting a fence variation for two fifty Wilcox Court as presented.
Second? Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion? No one? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The second item is the petition of Eric and Laura Gates for a three-and-a-half-foot variation from the required thirty-five-foot rear yard to construct a four-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot one-story room addition at their property, commonly known as five-six-one Eastwick Lane, with fifty-six square feet encroaching into the rear yard, which represents a two-point-two-nine percent reduction in the rear yard. Existing house is forty-eight feet from the rear property line. If the variation is granted, the addition would be thirty-one and a half feet from the rear property line and eight-point-six-five feet from the west property line. Impervious surface of this lot with the addition and reduction of size of the existing concrete patio will be forty percent, which will meet the forty percent maximum impervious surface for this size lot, which is zoned SR three PUD. The zoning Board of Appeals conducted a public hearing on October second, two thousand fourteen, on the petition for a rear yard variation, and made the requisite findings of fact and recommended approval. With that, I move to pass ordinance two oh fourteen dash eighty-four, an ordinance granting a rear yard variance for five-six-one Eastwick Lane as presented.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Erns. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, trustee Camer. Next on our agenda is Building Committee Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next on the agenda is twelve C Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next on the agenda is twelve D License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next on the agenda is Police and Health Committee Chairman Shipman.
I have no report tonight, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. Next on the agenda is Public Works Committee Chairman Erns.
Oh, we have lots of stuff to talk about. Item number one is the Influent Grinder Installation Bids. On September seventeenth, a notice for bidders was published in The Examiner and The Daily Herald. Ten bid packets were distributed to prospective bidders, and four bid packages were returned. Bids were due no later than ten a.m. on October eighth. Bowler Construction submitted the lowest bid of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars for this project. Bowler has worked for the village previously, and we have been satisfied with their work. Mr. Kester says that he has received the attached bid, teller sheet for the project, and the budget total for this project is two-hundred thousand, so we've saved three-thousand dollars. Based upon the bids submitted, Mr. Kester recommends the bid be awarded to Bowler Construction. Why did I say Mr. Kester? You know, Dan, I sit here for too long, and I'm just, you know, my sincere apologies. As Dan has suggested, the bid be awarded to Bowler Construction, and the bid is for a total of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. So, I move the Village Board award the bid for the twenty-fourteen Influent Grinder Installation. You know, maybe I just didn't want to associate that with you, Dan. I don't know. I move the Village Board award the bid for the twenty-fourteen Influent Grinder Installation Project to Bowler Construction of Waukegan, Illinois, in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Moved by trustee Erns, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion regarding the Influent Grinder Installation Project?
No, but I just wanted to mention that there is no limit to the fun that we can have with Public Works, right, Dan?
Any other comments or questions, discussion about? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thankfully, items two and three were approved under our consent agenda, and that concludes the Public Works Committee for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's.
If we had a question on the tertiary filter, would we have to bring this back up? Or can we just ask a question? If I can ask a question to Dan real quick. Just, I mean, we budgeted $100,000 for this tertiary filter, and we've got somebody that's willing to do this for $39,000. It seems like quite a discrepancy there. I'm just kind of curious why...
Mike, would you mind having this discussion under New Business so we can just move down to the next? Okay. Yeah, that'd be good. That way you can put it up there.
All right.
So next item on the agenda is New Business. Go ahead, Dan.
Ah, there we go. Back again.
That's a good question. We're not actually completing that entire project. That included wear, replacement, and some other worn parts. This is just the sand media that we can use, so we still can use the sand filters in the event that it's needed during an extreme flow event.
Okay. All right.
It's just getting us by.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there any other new business? Anybody else? Go to the order.
Move, Richard.
We got questions and answers yet, or?
Question-and-answer time now.
Okay. Well, statement, I guess.
Statement.
Just again, Bob, congratulations. Thanks for all that you did. I enjoyed working with you over the last...
I'm sorry, could you speak up, please?
I was saying thank you to Bob. And thank you to the chief and all of the staff for Citizens Police Academy. I know we received several compliments on that, so, well done, and we'll look forward to seeing the next class. That's all I have.
You know, if I can say something else about Mr. Gavalek. Not long after I got on the Board, I decided to take up golf again, which is, could be a, you know, a conflict in terms. But so I thought, well, I'll just go down to Bartlett Hills and buy a new set of clubs, hot sauce. So I went down and saw Bob, and he said, "Oh, we have so many lovely sets to sell you too." And so I bought a new set of clubs, and it was good. And he was a good salesman and fitted the clubs properly. And then I had to buy a bag. And among our inventory at the time was this god-awful Aqua, and I do mean Aqua, shiny golf bag. He said, "You know, I think we've been saving this one for you." And of course, you know, I'm a brand-new trustee, and I'm just thinking, "Ooh! Well, gosh, thanks." And so he sold me this bag, which was way overpriced. It was just ugly going to him. And, but he sold it. He sold it. And I'm sure that's the way he made all that money in the golf pro shop. And at that time, the pro shop was just this little alcove at Bartlett Hills, the barn. It was just the barn. But boy, he saw me coming. Thank you, Bob.
Great work, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions answered this time? Hearing none, we will adjourn for five minutes, and then we will reconvene for the committee of the whole meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Ranky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
We're adjourned.